Good evening, I'd like to welcome you all to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of October 25th, 2022. Our first item on the agenda is a public hearing for RBA Realty Site Plan Special Permit 70 Stony Hill Road. If you would read the legal notice, please.
Sure, to appear October 14th and October 21st, 2022, public notice. The Bevel Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on site plan and special permit proposed by RBA Realty LLC for 70 Stony Hill Road for adoption and site, or addition, sorry, and site improvements. The hearing will be held October 25th, 2022 at 7:00 PM, Conference from D of the Municipal Center, One School Street Bevel CT. The application can be found in the town Bevel's website. The public may send comments via regular mail and email to landus@bevelct.gov. Parking for hearing is located to the rear of the building. Ken Stevens, chairman.
I also have here to add to our file is a notice from the Bevel Health Department, Ray Bogin, is Bogin or Bogin? September 19th, the review of the plans of 70 Stony Hill Second Story Edition and site improvements. And I also have from Beth Kedag, our planning and zoning official, the staff report 70 Stony Hill Road Public Hearing. The proposed located in the Route 6 Zone is in addition to a 3,600 square foot structure for office and medical use. Benjamin Dodo PE will review with the commission the proposed site plan. The applicant has made positive substantial changes to the proposed architecture landscaping along with an addition of a sidewalk on Route 6. Department comments will need to be addressed by the applicant, while any commission comments from this evening's presentation. Revisions are minor in nature, and the commission can close the hearing if their comments are addressed. Joseph Buckless PE from VHB Engineering has submitted a traffic impact statement of which the conclusion states, "This project will generate very low traffic volumes that will go unnoticed by the typical driver through the intersection." And that is all we have for the file?
Yes, I just know for the record that our town engineer, James DeMayo, has been working with Ben and prior to Ben revising any plans, it was important to have the hearings, see if there's any comments, so all the revisions can be completed at one place.
Thank you.
Okay.
You have the floor.
Good evening, Planning and Zoning Commission. Benjamin Dodo, should I stand or sit? I don't know what to do anymore.
Stand, go ahead, stand and when he, have David bring up, David bring up his plan.
I'm on it.
Okay, when he brings up the plan, you can come up here, talk to the commission. That's who you're talking to.
That's what I'm.
And just for someone, I should tell you, anybody who is going to speak, if you stand closer to here, anybody who has to review this, your hearing is much, your voice comes much better if you're closer to the machine.
I'll sit here while I start the talk. So anyway, Benjamin Dodo, licensed professional engineer, Office 248 Main Street in Danbury, representing the applicant tonight, RBA Realty LLC. They're the owner of the subject property at 70 Stony Hill. With me tonight is Orellis Fernandez and her husband Brian McCarthy. Orellis and her family are owners of this property and they're the applicant as well with the proposed improvements to the site and building. The site, many of you are familiar with it, it's a 3,400 square foot office building. It was originally approved as a medical office back in the early 80s. And over the years, it's sort of been both professional office, medical office both. The proposal is to add a second floor to this building and really bring it up architecturally to keep in keeping with the neighborhood. The building is dated, it has a handicap ramp as its main feature in the front. That's coming out when we go to the architectural drawings, I'll show that to you. As Beth had mentioned in her memo, the project team, in addition to myself, Joe Balskus was our, is our traffic engineer. He submitted a traffic impact statement, there was no need for a full report just because of the low amount of trips generated. In summary, 18 peak hourly trips during the peak afternoon hours at the end of the day. And that's total trips, half of those exist now, so, and that peak in and out. So I think once you get to 100, I still want you to, you know, do a full analysis. So there was no need, 18 trips is every couple minutes, a car may come and go into the site and there's no issues with that. Ellen Hines is our landscape architect, I'll briefly show you our plans there. Ellen has proposed to keep some plantings, she's proposed some new plantings. We have some new landscape islands and areas that we previously didn't have them. Street trees along the frontage, and then you'll see in the back where we are proposing a 17 space parking expansion. She does call from some, for some planting measures along there as well. And then, let's see. RAB was prepared our lighting plan, the plan is going to have some pretty straightforward, some light poles and some building mounted lights. So that was part of the package, I'm not going to go into detail about that, but you could see from the diagram, there's no shedding off the site, and there's actually a graphic of what that looks like in their package. So in summary, this is a 1.3 acre site in the Route 6 Zone. The, David, do you mind going to the site plan, please?
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. The, the, the building has frontage on both Stony Hill and Old Hollyville Road. So there's an existing driveway on Old Hollyville Road.
That one's good, David.
Almost, there we go. Thank you, David. Okay, here's Stony Hill on the bottom, Old Hollyville, north is facing up. Here's the existing building. As I had mentioned, the existing building has a handicap ramp out front, it's part of the feature. What we're doing there is we're raising the grade in the front, putting a new sidewalk in, redoing the parking. So that ramp feature will go away, you'll be able to enter right in, you would at a, at a, at a modern building. The existing driveway is going to remain the same. What we're doing though is we're, this is the existing curb line right here. The back driveway is only a one-way aisle, it's a little tight behind the building. So we're making that a standard 24 foot wide driveway aisle, and I'm adding 17 parking spaces along the back. We need those parking spaces, we don't need all of them, but we do need some of them. We couldn't just add a second floor to this building with the existing parking count the way it was. What that also allows us to do is we have a defined refuse area, so we're going to have a screened-in dumpster and recycling enclosure. There'll be a small retaining wall in the back corner of the site, the wall probably averages three or four feet. The highest point is in the corner, it's going to be six feet high, going down to nothing at either end. And it's just, it's just to be able to achieve what we wanted, want to do there. As I mentioned, the driveway is going to remain the same, we're just going to realign it a little bit, three or four degrees, so it lines up with the new driveway aisle behind the building there. As I had mentioned, handicaps, new handicap spaces, landscape islands. There's an existing sign here, we're sort of moving the sign a little bit further away from the driveway and putting some plantings around that sign as well. So technically, your commission as part of the site plan approval has to approve the location of the sign. And right now, that's, I can't read it right there, but it's 18 feet from the property line and 53.9 to the road center line. So obviously, when they come in with their actual design and permit, sign will be in that location and they'll have to meet the town Bevel's requirements with respect to that. And if you look on Ellen's plan, she's proposing a revised planter around that, around that new sign as well. So let's see, as I mentioned, there's going to be improved circulation. We do have an existing, the site is served by town sewer, that's going to remain unchanged in Old Hollyville. The site does have a well, we're getting rid of the well, and we're, Aquarian has a water main in Stony Hill, trying into that, and the new building will be sprinkled as well. The existing building is not. We are also here for an excavation and fill permit, because technically, we triggered the threshold. Again, there's not a lot of earthwork here, it's about a net 1,400 cubic yards of removal, and it mainly has to do with going into the embankment there and putting those parking spaces. There's a little bit of fill I had mentioned, a couple hundred yards in the front, just to raise that front parking grade about 18 inches to, to, to get rid of that ramp. As I mentioned, we're already connected to, okay, drainage. The site right now does have a drainage system, but there is no detention system at all. Everything that falls just runs off into, into the existing storm, thank you, David, into the existing catch basins in the road and here. So what I did is, as part of the new design, I put a underground detention system and I purposely put it under the new parking lot, so we didn't have to dig up the old parking lot, put drainage system in. So we tied some surface drains, all the roof drains into it, and put an additional catch basin here in the driveway to keep, keep water from running out, to minimize the amount of water that runs out into the road. And again, this pipe here needed to be replaced because these existing pipe there wasn't, didn't have the capacity. We are reducing our flows for the 25-year storm. One of James DeMayo's comment was, he wants to see the 100-year storm routed to it. I did run it, and the system works fine. I just, I'm so used to doing the 25-year, and haven't worked with James before, he wants to see the 100, and that's part of what we met about. So the system will remain unchanged, it is big enough and it will handle, and I'll give James that information he's looking for with respect to that. The, James's comments mainly had to do with that. Oh, he had asked about turning movements, and you know, I just want to touch on that. I told him preparing turning movement plan wasn't warranted for this, and after meeting with him, he agreed. The site itself has adequate circulation, Joe's report talks about it. This site is going to be served by FedEx trucks, WB Mason trucks, garbage trucks, and passenger vehicles. It accommodates all of those now, and we're actually just, we're making it better. Because as I had mentioned, the back aisle is only one way, we're making that two ways, we're straightening out, we're straightening out the aisle, and we're also giving the garbage truck a straight shot at being able to pick that up, and then he has plenty of room to turn around, there's no dead ends on the site, because there, there's no longer going to be a one-way lane in the back there. So, and, and James agreed with that, and that'll be in my written response to him. Most of the rest of his comments have to do with notes and details and things of that nature, nothing that's going to change the plans. Ryan's comments from the health department, basically comments two through six are standard comments that get done as conditions of approval. First comment had to do with 2020 or 2021, there was an oil tank that was removed from the site. It was given a clean bill of health, he basically just says, if for some reason you find more oil on the site, get your LEDP onboard and, you know, get them and look, and that will obviously be done. But again, it was given a clean bill of health. He's just, I think, just being cautious with his comment there. And then, as I mentioned, I touched on Joe's traffic impact statement. I don't think I need to go any further on that. And then, David, if we can go to the architecture real quick. Studio Q, I did forget to mention, they're part of our design team, they're the biggest part of the design team in this case. This is what it's going to look like in Stony Hill Road. As you can see, the second floor is being added, there's some interesting roof lines compared to what exists today out there. As I had mentioned, the, you can see how the grade is pulled up a little bit to the front, that's where that ramp is now, where the, where the grade is dead flat there, obviously, windows, doors, peak roof lines. David, do you mind going to the next page? Maybe the next one? There we go. So the, the sides are going to be similar. Again, a lot of windows, a lot of natural light, the hardy plank style siding. Again, we don't have signs picked yet, but those are likely places that the signs will go, they'll have to come in for the appropriate sign permits, in that case, if you can go up one more, David, please? And then this is the, this is the rear elevation, again, a nice roof line. The only thing, there's, there's a notch in the back, and that's where the HVAC units are going to sit up on top, so they'll be hidden from the road. Because that's sort of tucked in, in, in the back, up on top of the roof. The, the, the one thing that, that is, is going on here, and this happens between the original, we called it a second floor addition, and it's effectively going to be a second floor addition, but most likely, the walls that are there now are going to be taken down and rebuilt to do this. Just because it's more economical, you can get, as you can see with the windows, framing doesn't work, insulation, utility. So I don't want anyone to say, hey, they said they're putting a second floor addition on, and they see the walls being taken down, but that's most likely what's going to happen here, but effect, also to get the proper roof heights and, because it is an older dated building, the existing foundation is going to remain the same. The building doesn't have a basement, but it has a crawl space that's about this high, it's a very nice crawl space. It has a concrete slab underneath it, all the utilities run under it, that's all going to stay, and the floor decking is going to stay as well. There will be an elevator in this building, so the floor will be cut for the elevator shaft and the emergency stairs to be put in as well. The, and as, as I didn't mention, Orellis and her family, they own At Home Care of Connecticut, located right around the corner from here. They do plan on moving into this building, into the, into one of the first floors, there'll be two units on the first floor, professional office, and the second floor will be medical. There are no tenants for the rest of the space at this point, because there is no, it's a little far out to start signing the tenants for building, it isn't even approved in land use yet. So that's the plan, I'll be happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Can I just mention one thing that Mr. Dodo forgot to mention?
Yes, I did, I know what it is.
You know what it is?
Sidewalks, right?
Thank you.
Let me, we are proposing sidewalks for the entire Stony Hill frontage. That was requested by staff, and Orellis was so kind to agree to it.
Really do appreciate it.
And David, do you mind turning to the landscape plan? I just want to, it should be at the end of my documents.
There it is.
There it is, right there, great. That's good, that's close enough. So as you can see, the circles are all new trees.
So the old, the old big tree is coming down?
No, Ellen's trying to save the Christmas tree. She likes the Christmas, she likes the Christmas tree, but we do have a note, if damaged, replace in the same spot with a seven, eight-foot tree. So if for some reason it does die when I run in this new storm pipe in there, she'll replace that tree. Yes, there's a landscape bed around the new sign. One, two, three of the islands, four, five, six, all have new trees. Ellen's trying to save this cherry and another cherry or apple in the back.
Yes.
And the landscape beds on the side, the front and back will not have landscape beds because the sidewalk is literally right against the building, but on the side, she calls to remove those plantings, put them to the side, save them, and then put them back when construction's done. And if they're dead, then they'll just have to be replaced with new material. And then, David, do you mind panning to the top, so I could see the top there? This is the slope. Ellen calls for this to be erosion control matted and planted with a conservation seed mix on there. So we're just not sprinkling grass seed, and that slope there, just to let you know, is a two and a half to one slope. Your requirements, two to one, you're allowed, so it's a little flatter, we have the room to do that. And the sidewalk. And you can see the, you can see the sidewalk on this plant, going right across the front.
Excellent, excellent. Okay, is there anyone in this room who would like to comment on the site plan? Is there anyone online, David, who would like to make any comments?
Uh, let's see here, Madam Chair. I think everyone in here is familiar with how we do public comments on Zoom, just in case you need a refresher. You would press the reactions icon at the bottom of the Zoom app, and there's a button for you to raise your hand, you can either do that or raise your hand on your screen if you are joining us by video. At the moment, I'm not seeing anyone.
Okay, how about commission members?
I have one question. David, could you bring up the basic plan, please?
The first sheet there, Ken?
Something that shows the whole property.
Okay.
I had a question on the north side. Does a residential house right next to there?
Yes.
I know there's kind of semi-forested there. Okay, is there any kind of fencing or additional screening, or is it all screened now the way it is?
Right now, there's, there's sort of scrubs and woods there, we are grading that, Kent, so there will be vegetation removed. I think if we go to Ellen's plan, it'll be, well, here, there's, there is, do you mind going to, there's, there's a wood fence here, Ken, on, on this property, but on the property that's on Old Hollyville, I don't think there is a fence there. Do you mind going back to the landscape plan? We do call for some of the tree line to remain, but we are grading.
Yeah, I can see that. My only question was, what's there now? If they're standing in their yard, are they going to be able to look at this building, or is it going to still be fairly well blocked off?
No, they'll be able to see this building. I mean, they do, but they do have a little bit of woods on their property as well. Yeah, I, I, I can't answer that exactly, but we did not propose any screening up there because we, we were well beyond the minimum requirement with respect to needing a buffer, yeah, and the grading, because the grading starts, starts about here, and I tried to not make it a super steep grade.
There's a bank there now.
There's a bank there now, and there is some, there is some woods up there, but we felt we were far enough below them that that really wasn't working, but no, they will be able to see the building, they can see the building right now, today, when you look through there.
But there's nothing going to be put on the building right next door, in the front.
That, this is a house here, and the driveway.
I'm looking out here, this, this house here.
That is, isn't that Quality Gym, right next to you?
Quality Gym's across the street, right?
Nope. So. So just to give you an example, Kitty, here is Quality Gym's dumpster. Right, right, right in the back, sort of mirroring our dumpster. So I mean, we're proposing a couple trees here, 10, but those are all deciduous ones in there, there is that tree canopy. If you put evergreens there, they may get shaded anyway.
Ken's right, and you're right, no, that's not necessary, I'm sorry.
Just checking.
No, that's okay.
Rob, any questions?
No, nothing on the site plan at all. Ian covered my thoughts.
So, hey, this is Ken, I have a question for Ben. And maybe it was on the plan, Ben and I missed it. Today, the current building has a front exit and an exit coming out on the Hollyville roadside of the building. Where are the exits, in addition to the front, going to be in the new construction?
The new, the new construction, the, the, the main entrance is going to be in the front, on the center, right in between those, right in there. I'm going to point here, I don't know if anyone can see that.
Yes.
See the little notch here, there'll be a vestibule when you go into the new building, right in front of the main handicap spot. There'll be a vestibule, and there'll be a corridor there. The building, the, the door on the side is going away, and it's going to be replaced with a new one in the back, right? Sort of right there. I don't know if anyone, can anyone see me point?
No, no, that, no, if you're, if you're on Zoom, you cannot see where you're pointing to, Ben, I'm sorry.
Actually, if you could see, it's.
We can.
Okay.
We can see where.
The cursor that you're seeing is mine.
Okay, well.
Right, right, right above your cursor, David, is where the, Ken, right above David's cursor is where the rear one, and you can see it says, "Proposed ADA compliant ramp and railing at rear door." That rear door is going to be a true fire escape. There's going to be a fire escape from the first to the second floor through the hallways. So that'll be the fire escape in the back, and then the front will be right here.
Okay, that was my concern, you answered my next question, thank you.
Okay, great.
So the entrance is, the entrance will be the front and back?
The front is the main entrance, the back is, is, you know, if you want to sneak out to lunch, or if there's an emergency, you can go down that way. But it's not going to be for customers or anything like that to come in.
Well, did you have something?
The sidewalk will have a, will be ADA compliant or meets the road?
Yes, there'll be a ramp there, yes.
No questions? My, my only question was the, the light poles, you mentioned light poles?
Yes.
And what is going to be the height now they're going to be?
They are in the package here, I think they're going to be 20-foot high poles, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, and they're going to be downs, down?
Yes, I actually want to show you that drawing, because I think it's very, I'm not sure David's going to be able to find it. Only because it wasn't a drawing, it was submitted as a, as a package.
The package is in the file? Anybody wants to look at the package?
This, this is in the package, this sort of shows the lighting, this is a lot better than, in my opinion, looking at numbers. Show that the light is maintained on the property, and you can see there's lighting from the building.
To the site itself?
Yes.
Excellent.
And you do have this, there's also this one that shows all the numbers, but that's, that'll drive your brain crazy looking at it. But this was modeled based on the, on the, on the contour map.
And then those lights will go on at some time during the evening and come back on the next evening, or will they be on all night?
I, I can ask Orellis that, Orellis, you can put those on a timer, correct, or Brian? Yeah, so they'll correspond to business hours or some reasonable, yes, they will not be on all night.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
So the, my other question is, because James, our town engineer, was looking at this so closely, it didn't have to go out to the fire department?
Went to.
Oh, Tom did look at it? Oh, okay. And the, also the police.
They had no, no comments.
Yeah, and like I mentioned, the building's going to be sprinkled, and we're improving access on the site, so it should be a no-brainer from that standpoint.
Excellent.
Kitty, I have a comment.
Please, Bob.
Okay, I, I think this is a positive improvement to the area, and I'm glad to see more sidewalk out there. It's going to be hopefully all connected at some point. Thank you.
Kenny?
Yeah, I was actually, hold on, let me lower the hand. I was going to ask, is the, is the sidewalk going to connect to anything, or is this sort of a sidewalk that just sort of goes?
Beginning?
Under, no, understood, no, you've answered really all the questions. I admit to having a bit of fondness for this building, because it was the old Bevel Visiting Nurse Association building. So I do have a bit of a fondness for it, and I'm really glad that it's going to be getting some good, solid use. That's really wonderful.
Spend a lot of hours in that building.
Yes, indeed, lots of time spent.
Okay, anyone else have any further questions, commission members?
Yeah, I just want to say. Um, I, I find it very inspiring to see that a resident of the town is taking time to make improvements onto a very prevalent, prominent corner on Old Hollyville Road, and the time to do the proposed architecture, landscaping, and other amenities associated with it, the corner will definitely shine. Thank you very much.
We all appreciate it.
Nicely done.
And we live in the neighborhood, and we want it perfect. Thank you very much.
Forever. Thank you. So I'm, we can close this hearing tonight, this hearing is closed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Beth.
Okay, so our next item is our business meeting. So I would like to keep done for Rich Tiditz. So the minutes of 10:11, 22, has anyone? So, uh, the minutes of ten, eleven twenty-two, has anyone looked at the minutes and would somebody like to make a motion?
I move to accept the minutes.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Against abstention? Motion passes. Do we have any invoices from the news times?
Yes, we do.
We do.
We had invoices for legal nursing. The total amount is two thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty cents.
I move that we um, pay the invoices to the news times, two thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Abstention, motion passes. This will have a work session, excuse me, please. For M K Holmes, LLC revised site plan, six A Francis Clark Circle.
Um, Kitty, what, Kitty, what it is, is the, um, at the last meeting. You asked for a resolution of approval and what I did was, that says, this is resolution of approval. As a matter of reading the first paragraph and the last paragraph under reasons, you can note the conditions.
Yeah.
Number one through.
Sure. May I just ask all commission members, have you read? Have you read it?
Motion to approve a roof by his site plan to construct a nineteen thousand five hundred square foot building. When property located at six A Francis Street Clark Circle, assessors map ten, block twenty-three, lot one fifty-nine thirty. Owned by M K Holmes LLC, subject to the following conditions, one through five. Reasons, the commission has carefully reviewed the application. If constructed as approved, the project will not be detrimental to the health, safety and welfare of the neighboring properties in the town of Bethel.
All in favor? Do we have discussion?
Okay, let it be the motion, you need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Would there be any discussion on the motion? Anyone? No? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, abstention, motion passes.
Thank you.
Now, now, our six Wolf Pits Road, we asked for the resolution for, for that site and we have it here in front of us. And then, has everyone had time to look at it?
Yep.
Yeah.
Somebody like to make a motion, please? Wolf Pits?
Motion to approve a request for a special permit under section three point three point eight point four. To construct a twenty-four by twenty, two-car garage in the front yard of property located at six Wolf Pits Road. Owned by Dawn Taylor and located within the town of Bethel assessors files. As map fifty-two, block fifty-six and lot fifteen, subject to the following conditions. Um, I'll read it, it's just one, the structure is not to be used for habitable space or an accessory dwelling unit. Reasons, the commission states that the project will not be detrimental to the health, safety and welfare. Of the neighboring property, properties and is a normal and customary use associated with a residential unit.
Write a second.
Thank you.
Uh, any discussion?
I'm just gonna abstain, I missed this portion of the public meeting.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, and Paul is abstaining. Motion passed. Okay, our next item is forty-five Star Lane and once again, we, excuse me, please. We have Beth to write up a resolution for it, as she has, we have it right here in front of us. Uh, would somebody like to make the motion?
Motion to approve a request for a special permit under section three point four point eight point B to construct a thirty-four by forty-two. Attached garage located at forty-five Star Lane owned by William and Jennifer Celi, located within town of Bethel assessors files as map forty-three, block forty-seven A. And lot one seventy-eight dash oh seven, subject to the following conditions. The structure is not to be used for habitable space or accessory dwelling unit. Reasons, the commission states that the project will not be detrimental to the health, safety and welfare of neighboring properties. As a normal and customary use associated with a residential unit.
Grab a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ken. Any discussion on, on this?
I'll be abstaining from this one as well.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, our net new business, we have.
No new business.
Bond release?
Finance report, if you look attached to your stack report, there's a memo from the Board of Selection. And it's in regards to an eight dash twenty-four request, planning and zoning commission in regards to a property. To be purchased, located at one thirty-four South Street, what I did was, I attached a copy. Of the GIS map to show you exactly where the property is located, town of Bethel was located possibly purchasing that property. Using it for parking in regards to Parloa Field. And so what the Board of Selection is asking for is a positive report, if you are so inclined. To say, yes, you agree that the property should be purchased for that purpose.
Does anybody like to make a motion?
Kitty, wait, I have a comment.
Sure, thank you, Bob.
We think that's the most wise use of that property because, you know, it, it crosses a very busy street. Try and park and then bring kids across the street in, into Parloa Field. I don't think it's a, a wise use of the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. It'd almost be better to put a, a, it's a dangerous situation as it is right now, coming out of the other parking lot and walking along that wall. So I think it'd be wise to, uh, you know, put some money into improving the, uh, other parking lot. Whether it be a pedestrian, some kind of a pedestrian bridge across that brook. Or something so that you could get the kids from the parking lot into the field without going near the road. So I, 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 I think I would be opposed to, uh. Putting parking across a busy street like that and then expecting kids to just wander back and forth across into the field.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question as well, if I may. Is there any plan or is this too early in the process, Beth, of entrance and exit? How many parking spaces, will there be speed bumps put across South Street to slow the traffic down? As Bob mentioned, it is a dangerous section right there with people coming and going and the light at the corner there. Um, I, I'd be curious knowing a little bit about that before I could take a position on whether this is a part of the property for that.
I'm gonna go sit over here so you guys can see me.
Beth, I was gonna jump, if I can just jump in on that, I don't know what the um, procedure is for getting something like a crosswalk. Or things like that, so. If you, yeah, I would love to hear some commentary on that if you've got any.
Okay, as far as the, um, the purchase of this property and this for parking purposes. It's my opinion that that would be the best use for it, um, to increase a gravel parking area for supplemental parking at Parloa. As far as Bob's concern, which I think are very well-founded concerns. Having grown up in that area as a small child and walking across that walkway and such, there are plans. In the works to make improvements with that walkway leading into Parloa. Um, there are, it's a multi, multi-purpose, multi-item plan. Um, that I do believe that will be worked on and funded in the near future. Dealing with the parking lot, dealing with creating a drop-off area for people, if anyone has small children, using multiple sprint. Fields down there for soccer, things of that nature.
Seeing like a splash pad going in.
I know, if you put aside the splash pad, I do know that there are other improvements associated with park. That I feel very strongly about, that will be taken care of and should be taken care of, being forty years too late. And I believe that this, utilizing this lot, as far as expanding the other side of the property where the. Existing parking lot is, there is no more room. For that to expand.
And what about, Beth, um, any thoughts on speed bumps and crosswalk identification?
I think as we keep going forward, that will, that may come into play and that is, um, something that. The traffic authority or the police commission is really the authority on, on working with and handling. Um, I would say that this parking area, if it's gonna be utilized, it's gonna be utilized as a gravel parking area. Because of its proximity to the wetlands and also the flood plain.
I just, I just have a quick question, just because I've never really taken advantage of Parloa beyond. When my children were small, just going there and parking on Blackman Avenue, I guess. Um, there's not enough, I'm guessing that there's not enough parking. In that, in that other space, is that what the?
Yes.
I would say as a grand.
I don't know, so.
No, when there's a soccer game or something going on, you can't get.
It's very difficult, I would say.
Okay.
I have some small grandchildren that are involved in recreational activities, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, I agree, I agree that there, there is not enough parking there for the activities that go on there, but. I, I don't know that putting a parking lot across the street is a solution to the, you know, to the problem. I can't tell you what the solution is, but I, I think, uh. Correction of what's wrong there now. On, on that side of the road. That the park is on is more important than increasing the amount of parking off-site across the street. I mean, if cars that come in off fifty-three come flying around that corner when, when they catch the light. Uh, and the car's going the other way, you know, when the kids are crossing the road. Then you make a very valid point, there has to be a crosswalk there, yes, but, you know, that. Crosswalk, people get hit in crosswalks all the time, too.
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a good, that's a good thought, yes, absolutely. Uh, but, as I said, the, um. I, I've gone by here many times and when there's a game going on, you can't get to Parloa. Because of the parking that's, that's, that's going on already. A, a crosswalk and a speed bump could possibly be the answer. Never gonna do one there, not like they did at the high school. You know, so, you know, I don't, will we, shall we have a vote? Now we don't know.
My point is, I think there ought to be a lot more thought goes into this before we go out and purchase that property and put a parking lot there, that's all.
I get the feeling there's a lot of thought already going into this and they need this portion to go forward. Um, cause I do remember seeing some proposed, uh, plans with a splash pad and all sorts of. Upgrades and really redoing Parloa Park, which, uh, I have two little girls and I looking forward to that kind of stuff. Uh, that'd be like a mile and a half from my house. Just far enough where I'd have to drive there, cause I'm at the end of Nashville, so I'm looking for some parking. Um, I think this little proposed parking lot would be a good idea. Obviously, a crosswalk would be necessary, the only other option would be cutting into, to get more parking, be cutting into the soccer field. Which no one wants to do, I don't wanna make the field any smaller.
But I will tell you, as far as.
Good use of the property.
As far as the master, what I would call the master plan for Parloa. When you, when Bob was mentioning the sidewalk, I don't know, have you seen that plan at all, Bob?
Uh, I, I did see something from Park and Rec, I think.
Okay, so because they're talking about anything improvements there, but they're also talking about where the, um, chain goes along. The entryway there that we all have to climb over for the last forty years and now I can't do it as well anymore. They're talking about doing a drop-off.
It's easier to go under it.
Excuse me?
The change, it's easier to go under.
Okay. I can't do that either, but we'll talk about that another, but they're, they're. Okay, so you go in, drop your kid off for the soccer practice or whatever's going on in the multi-purpose field. Plus, they're also gonna be putting in handicap park. With three spots for handicap parking, again, for something that we are so lacking in this area. I can't tell you that there have been many times in this town that we have had the opportunity to buy property. And we let it go. Because of this property's proximity, I do believe that Bob brings up some excellent points as far as safety and things of that nature. I think that, that it is, or just the property, no matter what. And incorporate its usage with Parloa. But let's face it, we do have expertise, we have people, experts in traffic, we have our own traffic consultants. That we can use, South Street is a local road, it is not a state road. So we do have governance over it and we can make changes as we see fit.
Very good thought. No, I, I totally.
They have those new strobe lights now for crosswalks around parks like West Con has. Yeah, you just hit like a button in it, they put some lights on, so. Even embedded in the pavement.
Yeah.
Yeah, excellent. I think it's something we can address.
Should be addressed.
Once we purchase the property.
Yeah, I think the first step is to move forward with the purchase.
Okay. Then can we, can we send a favorable?
I would take a consensus.
Consensus to everyone?
Or make a motion to, I, I, I think it should be formal, make a motion to send a favorable report. For a selection and do your vote.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to send a favorable report to the Board of Selection on the subject of purchasing one thirty-four South Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close?
Aye.
Abstention, motion down. Okay, now what about the, um. Consideration for approval of the A RPA Rural Roads Grant for Bethel Department?
That's, that's a, that's attached to it, that's, that's a separate action.
Well, that's what I asked you, is that, that's what next on earth again?
I gave you a copy of the Board of Selection's meeting.
Notes?
That was their notes.
Oh, I'm sorry. What, what is this? Okay, thank you.
Okay, there was one other item I just wanna bring up to your attention to, um, consider and we'll have a discussion on it. Next meeting. Um, we have a letter, we received a letter from the Bethel Land Trust. In regards to property that Town of Bethel owns over at, it's called Seventeen Sunset Hill Road. It is a piece of open space that was part of the original subdivision. The Bethel Land Trust is asking for the Town of Bethel to consider. Feeding that property over to the Bethel Land Trust in some format because it will become part of the Wolf Pits Reserve. Now, this could end up being a little bit of controversy in a way because you have. An open space organization asking for the Town of Bethel to give them the Town of Bethel's open space. But I'm of the belief that there is a way to do it because it will connect to their Wolf Pits Reserve. That it can be done legally by, through town council, through whatever format we have to go through. I think we will have to do a town meeting, things of that nature and do the deed in such a way, we deed it to the Bethel Land Trust. But if they, um, dissolve, it's given back to the Town of Bethel.
Is this the piece that goes around cemetery?
Yes, okay. I, I do believe strongly about this in a way to at least approach the subject with the Board of Selection and the legislative side. Because of the work that the Bethel Land Trust has done on the Front Preserve. They have developed into a very outstanding organization, along with being able to, um. Attract other organizations to work with them, such as the Boy Scouts. Um, I'm trying to, there was another organization, I can't think of it off the top of my head. But they have truly become a very, uh, well-organized machine. That works very, very hard. And you have to remember, the Front Preserve is owned by the Town of Bethel, it is not owned by the Bethel Land Trust. Right? If there was a way to work out an agreement, whatever the agreement is to get the Bethel Land Trust access for this property. It gives them better access to the Wolf Pits Preserve, which if you look at my little color sheet there, I was trying to show you where. I was trying to show you where their property is in connection with this. So I want you all to think about it. And we can discuss it at our next meeting. And I will have Lou Valenti here, too, I just wanted to give you a heads up. Some table for a possible discussion with all of you. And Lou would be very happy to come and talk a little bit further about it.
Excellent.
Okay? Um, and just note for the record, you did receive a copy of the lawsuit that was recently filed in regards to Seventeen Whitney Road. Um, I turned that over to counsel. And the way that works is if you don't discuss it with anyone. Cause still is, it is. Lastly, we have a public hearing that's gonna be scheduled for November twenty-second in regards to a zone change in Diamond Avenue. And that will probably be a public hearing with a lot of interest. Will generate interest by having more people coming to the hearing. My suggestion is, is that we, there's a big public hearing to be held in the GP room. There is one fault with that. And that is, and I think you all online can agree with this, that when you do a hybrid meet in the GP room, you cannot hear. Am I correct?
Yes, you are.
Okay, so my suggestion is, I'm gonna be just do the public hearing in person. We'll have the screen set up so they can, everybody can see, we have the screen for the public and the screen for you. But it will strictly be in-person public hearing. That's the only way we can figure to do it without moving to the schools and the trees and all these things that it.
Anytime we've done that down there, we've had trouble.
Yes.
Yeah, and so.
I mean, COVID, because of COVID. Now it's over, but it, it don't, I think, do you agree online?
Yes.
Issue members?
I've never watched it online, I've only been there in person, but what I've heard, it's a challenge.
It's difficult at best.
What happens is you hear parts of it, but parts of it you, you know. You can't hear it, so you, you have to try and watch it with the, you know. One ear open.
You're right, Bob, that's true. All right, so are you all in agreement with that?
Beth, can I, before, before you decide, hold on. So let, let me understand what you're doing. It would be almost kind of live stream only kind of thing, people could watch. And they can hear. But the problem is that they can't hear.
No, it would just, we would go back to our regular way of recording.
Okay.
No live stream.
It wouldn't be live stream, no.
So it would not be on Zoom at all?
Recording.
So not on Zoom at all?
Because that, what, when you live stream, it's a hybrid meeting, we're not, what I'm saying is we're not doing a hybrid meeting.
Understood.
That's what I'm proposing, you just do in-person and then we have the recording available to those that wanna hear it.
If we can't come, you'll have something that you can watch, that you can understand every word. Yeah, which will be great.
Wait, wait a sec, hold on, hold on.
Audio.
Wait, wait, wait.
Okay.
What can you watch?
No, sorry, watch, I say watch.
Can I take a chance to explain, Beth?
Please.
Okay, so, so the, the meeting will still be audio and video recorded like it is now. Um, what will not happen is we will not have Zoom as a medium for people to be participating remotely. In other words, it'll be the old fashioned way, for lack of better words. Where if you want to participate, you're coming in person to the general purpose room. Am I getting that correctly, Beth?
It sounds right.
Okay.
But the cha, but the challenge with technology is that people who are watching a video, are they gonna be able to hear anything? That's been a problem in the past.
Great.
So.
For, for clarity, it's not going to stream. It will still be recorded, that recording will be available after the event for people who want to watch after the effect.
Right. But if they. That's correct, that's correct. That's correct.
So the technology will be there to record, video record the meeting. But that's it, okay.
That is correct, Penny.
As long as the tech, you know, so far, all I remember is that we had audio recording, we didn't have video recording.
Right.
Right.
I just want to make sure that the video recording technology is there since it wasn't working when we used the Zoom platform. Just, am, am I like the only one that's overthinking this? Oh, thanks, Kitty. Okay, I'm, I'm cool, I just want to, I just wanted to clarify, I'm good.
Thank you. Anything greater, Beth?
I'm confused, though. No, I leave it to David.
November twenty-second or the week before, November twenty-second, firm that up.
No, we're gonna, it's gonna be formed up now.
Okay.
Okay, because we have to do the legal noticing and things like that.
So. Oh, goodness, thank you.
So Beth, is that the November twenty-second meeting is listed on the agenda?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right, good.
Okay. Um, the other thing I just wanted to bring up was at our next meeting. Um, I'd like to see, there, there has been some discussion with the TOD regulations. Yes. Um, and there's, I've given you some data and some background and some notes in regards to some changes that I think that you might want to consider putting forward to the TOD recs, dealing with height, dealing with some percentage of open space with some of the smaller lots. Also, some of the commission member, one or two commission members have talked about a moratorium. If someone, so what I just want to do is broach with you very briefly on the process for a moratorium, you can think about that also. And that would be discussed at our next meeting, because the next meeting, all we have is one eighty-five press. Really would like to use a lot of it in jest. If you, if you ever want to consider a moratorium on any type of regulation, there's a process that you have to go through for. And what it is, is a public hearing. You, you have to state your specific reasons for requesting the moratorium. You have to state for how long you want to have the moratorium take effect. And then what you also have to do as a board is have a super majority of you have to decide to agree to do the moratorium in order for it to be effective. I just wanted to explain that because one or two of you have mentioned that to me also.
That the moratorium also have to have a length?
Yes, I did say that, I'm sorry, I didn't speak loud enough. A length of time. Okay? Anybody else have anything they want to add to that? In regards to TOD? I'll put something together. Okay, okay, all right, that's all I have for you this evening.
Thank you. Okay, commission members, would you, anyone like to make some comments?
I just have a question. Beth, can you, um, spell out specifically where the property is that we're talking about with the land trust or the town of Bethel, where is that?
Okay, if you look, when you look in your emails, you'll see that Ken Stevens mentioned that I left, I forgot in the attachment. There's a later email that shows you a picture, a colored picture of where it is.
Okay.
Sunset Hill Road, are you familiar with Sunset Hill, come off of fifty-eight?
Right.
You pick right. You go off a little ways and you'll see an old cemetery.
Okay.
The entrance is right next to the cemetery.
All right, terrific, thank you.
Anyone else, Paul? How about the public? Is anyone in the public who'd like to make a comment?
BJ, please. I have a question.
Name and address, please.
She did, she said.
Whatever happened with the proposal from the, with some mountain biking club that wanted to have, set up a mountain biking trail there in, I think Clark Park.
It's my understanding that they're still working on that with the Board of Selectmen. And they're raising money in order to put together a proper site plan and bring it forward to the land use commission.
So will there be a public hearing on that?
Oh, there would be, yes, absolutely.
And would that be?
It would be through the planning and zoning.
So it would be.
That we would at least have one, I don't know what the other process is for the rest of that to happen. Um, if the Board of Selectmen has to have one or none. But there are land use approvals that are necessary to do that.
And are they gonna have bathroom facilities?
I don't know.
Anyone else in this room?
BJ, hop in, they said they were rebuilding very minimal stuff when they first proposed it last year.
Anyone else in this room like to make a public comment? Paula Antolini?
Hi Kitty, how are you? I have some questions. Uh, one is, uh, what is the problem with the sound on the general purpose room sound system that you're saying? People can't hear or is that the sound doesn't even go on for the Zoom meetings?
People in the, in Zoom land can't hear. Can't hear the presentation.
What is the reason, can that be fixed?
Probably the size of the room and the high ceilings, the push sticks in there are terrible.
And the equipment, I think, was the part of the equipment, too.
No, we, we had the new equipment, it didn't make any difference.
Oh, okay. So just the, the size and the height and.
Just the scope of the room messes with the computers.
We tried it several times, Paula, and it didn't work.
Yeah, that's a shame because that really is convenient, letting a lot more people have access.
For, for a larger application, you're absolutely right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. My other question is, you mentioned a project that involves nineteen thousand square feet, I think it was in Clark Park. I'm wondering what type of business it is and what the building is going to be used for, what's going to be kept inside?
Office and warehousing, yes. What was everything?
Warehousing of what kind of equipment? Or materials?
The units are, the way, the way this works is the, if there are several units in there, the units are rented out on an individual basis, there's a process where it has to be gone through the land use department and to ensure that the uses are compatible with the zone that they're in.
Okay, so it's not anything hazardous or something like that?
Anyone else, Paula?
I said, so it's not anything hazardous or anything like that, that's being kept in the building, so it's being rented to second parties? Spaces are gonna be rented?
It's my understanding that some are, yes.
What's the name of the company?
It's on the agenda?
Yeah, it is.
It's on the agenda, Paula?
I just want to make sure I have the right, the right ones.
MK Homes, yes.
MK Homes, okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else out there, David, who has their hand raised?
I am not seeing anyone else with their hand raised at this time, I'm sure.
We should do a adjourned.
Motion to adjourn, Bob. I do second it, Paula. Okay, on favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Anyone again?
Thank you.
Motion passed, have a good week.